Okay. Everybody here ready? Okay. Good evening. This Town of Adams Board of Selectment meeting on Wednesday, July 15th, 2020 is now in session. Before we get started, I just want to remind folks that this meeting is being conducted virtually, and it is also being recorded via Zoom, is also being recorded as part of Northern Berkshire Community Television. Pursuing the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectment is being conducted via remote participation. In the room this evening are members John Duval, Christine Hoyt, Rick Blanchard, and Joe Novak. Participating remotely is member Jim Bush. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning into Channel 1303, thank you to Northern Berkshire Community Television, or by calling the number posted on the town's website for this meeting that is being conducted via Zoom. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access, a recording of this meeting is available. It will be posted on Northern Berkshire Community Television on their website at nbctc.org as soon as they are able to post it. For those of you who are on the call, I just wanted to let you know, once again, we are being recorded. I have placed a television in the room so that our members of the board can see all of you when you are talking, and I will do my best to keep people apprised of who's in the room. We're going to admit one more person before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. I have a person on the phone, area code 781. If you could state your name for the record.
David Rhodes, Board of Health.
Thank you, David. Okay. And I just wanted to let the board members know that Deb Dunlap is with us. She's just in the next room and taking minutes, so I ask that you continue to use your outdoor voices when speaking in this room. It helps Peter for television purposes, which television microphones are the taller ones. The telephone ones for everybody listening via Zoom are the flat ones on your table. I think that's all of the logistical information that I have. So with that, I'll ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you very much. First item of business on our agenda is the approval of minutes from June 12th, 2020. It's my understanding that all members of the board are able to vote on these minutes. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion. We waive a reading of the minutes and accept them as provided for June 12th, 2020.
I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by John. Because we have a member participating remotely, it'll be a roll call vote. So I'll start with Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
John? And Jim?
Yes.
Okay. And it's a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. That brings, we do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:10 PM, so I'm going to move to public comments, and I will open it up to anyone who is on the call who wishes to speak under public comments. I think, David? Yeah?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Oh, let me get my piece of paper because I wanted to talk about the Board of Health revising our tobacco regulations, and there are several points that I would like to make clear. First off, we are tapping the number of permits in town. The current draft regulations say 11 permits. This was brought up because over the past recent, there has been an incredible increase in number of permits, and we felt that this was setting a bad sign to our underage citizens. We do not want them to be exposed. We would prefer that they don't start smoking in the first place. Ultimately, we, as permits retired, we would drop that to nine, which is kind of the municipal aim. In Massachusetts, essentially one permit per thousand population. There are limitations in when a new permit is issued, that the state code says that it has to be at least 500 feet from a school, and that we added 500 feet from a sports athletic facility, field, et cetera, playground, or another vendor. And finally, we're making this conform with the new tobacco law, which this allows flavors for regular vendors, but they are allowed only in adult-only stores or outlets. And finally, the structure of fines has been steeply increased. A first infraction will get you $1,000 fine, that is mandatory, no ifs, ands, or buts. Second and third go up to $2,000 and $5,000. And again, that's required by the state. So we will be holding our public meeting August 5th, 4 o'clock, and we will be quote cheering from people. I will publish a notice in the Eagle so that anyone who wants to be involved with that can indeed make their voices heard.
Thank you, David, and I want to thank you for sending along a draft of the tobacco regulations that you will be looking at on August 5th. I will forward them on to the Board of Selectmen, but will you be posting the draft regulations somewhere that the public will be able to see them prior to the August 5th public hearing?
Yes, yes, and that information will be in the public announcement, but I'll try to take care of that either tomorrow or first thing next week to be in communication with the town clerk to make sure that that is available. But the Eagle posting will be next week, and so yes, it will be available.
Okay, great, and I will get you the Zoom information so that you can post that accordingly. I apologize that I didn't get that to you today.
Not a problem. That's why I got to you this week, because I wanted to do it next week. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for calling in. Appreciate that.
Okay. I'm leaving the meeting now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. That does bring us to 7:10 PM, so I just want to suspend public comments and we'll come back to it. That's okay, to just stay on time. So I do need a motion to go into the public hearing, and Deb, you sent me that information as to who tabled it, and I'm trying to find it now. It was Member Blanchard, seconded by Member Bush.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the public hearing.
Yep, thank you. Yep, thank you. So I have a motion by Rick to put the public hearing back on the agenda. Jim?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Roll call vote. Joe, Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Christine is a yes. So that puts it back on the table for us to discuss, and now I need a motion to actually go into the public hearing.
So move it.
Okay, so we are entering into a public hearing for the petition for poll relocation for National Grid and Verizon at 3739 Commercial Street in Adams. That is a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by John. Roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine, so we are in public hearing. On the call this evening, we do have Becky Ferguson representing Community Development who has been working with the group on this particular petition. We also have legal counsel, and I believe we have representative from National Grid. Are you both National?
That's correct.
So Becky, I'm going to turn it over to you if you wanted to just introduce this a little bit or say a few things, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, no problem. So this is part of the Route 8 reconstruction project, which we have been working on in the town for a number of years. We went to full 100% design sort of in the late winter, and DOT advertised the project in May, and just recently had the bid opening. So this is one more, as part of the project, these two poles are designed to be relocated. Richard and Justin can talk more about that, but it's part of a much bigger project along Route 8 to do the full-depth reconstruction, new sidewalks, new crossings, new drainage. So this is one more piece of it.
Great, and so I think we have Richard and Justin. I don't know who was speaking first, but if you wanted to introduce yourself.
I'll go ahead and introduce myself. I'm Justin. I'm the one, I partially designed this job. I did the backend of it. I've been working for TRC, we're contractors for National Grid, for about seven years now. I'm not really sure what else I should say.
Richard Jackson with TRC on the Avenue of National Grid. I've been, I'm just here to support Justin if there's any questions that he can't answer for the board, since I have more experience with town meetings.
Great. So Justin, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure. So the two poles that are being relocated, as stated earlier, being relocated due to a state DOT road project. I'm honestly not 100% sure of the details of the state road project, but I know National Grid wants to, we need to relocate Pole 37, which is three poles, or actually, sorry, yep, three poles east of Leonard Street on Route 8. That pole needs to be relocated roughly six feet to the north and nine feet east, and then Pole 39, which is the first pole east of Leonard Street, has to be relocated as well. That one will need to be relocated three feet back and 15 feet to the north. And that's essentially it, as far as those two poles are concerned.
Sure. Anyone have any questions for Justin, or Richard, or for Becky?
Well, my concern is earlier, I didn't know where poles were in the burbs.
Okay.
I think I understand that now.
Feel better about that now? Okay. Other questions, comments?
So Madam Chair, I said I understand the overall project, the reason for, you know, the reconstruction, but what's a specific reason to move these poles? Is it because of widening of the road? Is it, I know that one of these is by the bridge, I believe, the small bridge that goes up that hill, but is there just because of the way the road's going to be kicking that corner?
That's correct. It's, I'm not.
They would need to move to gain access for the road itself and then the sidewalk that's going to be installed in that location. So the poles are going to go to the back of sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Hearing none, we can, if there's anybody in the public that has any questions, comments? Just giving it a moment in case there's a delay. Hearing none, we will need a motion to come out of the public hearing.
Did you already talk, did you already discuss the banners?
We have not, nope. We're done here. We're public hearing at this point on a pole relocation. We'll reopen up public comments when we're done with this item.
All right, thank you very much.
You are very welcome.
Can I make a motion when we come out of the public hearing?
I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Jim. It's a roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine, so we are out of public hearing. The matter before us is to grant permission to relocate the poles, as stated. I'm just trying to find the actual language. I apologize. But it is for National Grid to relocate two poles, Pole number 37 and number 39 on Commercial Street, beginning at a point approximately 113 feet east of the central line of the intersection of Leonard Street and continuing approximately 275 feet in a northeast direction. Right? I think I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I do need, what is the board's pleasure, I guess, with regard to the pole relocation request that's before us?
I'll make a motion to the board to approve the pole relocation request.
All right. I have a motion by Member Blanchard to approve the request that's submitted.
I'll second, I have one more question.
I have a second by Member Duval. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, as I was reading this, looking at the map, if you're moving nine feet to the east, I guess depending on which way you're going, which way you're going, nine feet to the east, is that moving towards, like, towards a homeowner's land? The town only owns so many feet in, so I was just curious, you move it nine feet to the east, is that going to go on someone's private property?
The Pole 39, I believe, will be going on to someone's property, yes. That would be, let me find that address. Hold on one moment.
Maybe Zero Grove Street?
I believe, yeah, it's going to be, yeah, yes.
Have the homeowner, I'm sure they were notified about this public hearing?
Yes, all of the residents affected were sent a notice about this hearing.
Okay, thank you.
And Becky, did Community Development get any mail or any correspondence from the homeowners that you contacted prior to this meeting?
No, we didn't receive any feedback.
Do I have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, so roll call vote. It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. I want to thank Justin and Richard and Becky for joining us this evening. You're more than welcome to stay with us for the rest of the meeting, but no hard feelings if you choose to bow out at this point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the members of the board, we do have three copies of that agreement that we will have to sign, so this evening we're at another time. So I'm going to go back to public comments and see if there's anybody who wishes to speak to the board under public comments.
Is this my time to speak?
Sure, John, yep.
Well, originally, I thought it was going to be an issue regarding having the veterans' banners on Park Street. However, I received two emails from Jay Green saying that we were good to go now for putting the banners on Park Street because we're not conflicting with any other things, so I guess I really don't have a major issue, but I just would like to tell, you know, as an update, we have received, they have all the banners, are already done, and they're ready to start on Monday. Cindy, I know that you told me that you would be glad to step in and help us with getting the word out to the different transcript, or transcript, yeah, Eagle and Iberchers. So I haven't gotten back to you because I have other things going on, and yeah, I'd be glad to take you up on that offer, as long as we're still good for Monday, and if anybody has any problems with us starting on Monday, we need to know that before we, before, say, tomorrow, tomorrow would be the latest, because I plan to meet with them on Monday. Hopefully, we can decide on what poles we need to put up between now and Monday, so I can tell them what poles to put up on. Anyways, that was what I was here for. If anybody has any questions, me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Sure, thank you, John, for that update. I will just ask if Administrator Green has anything to add. I think part of the communication was to just make sure that there's some coordination between DPW and Community Development and the group that's putting up the banners to just identify the poles by the end of this week so that you are ready to go on Monday morning. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know if there's any other questions about that, but it seems like it's a go. And John, I'll follow up with you and get a few more details. We've got Jeff Noonan here in the room from Iberchers, so this is his first invitation, but I'll follow up with him after this to give him an official time that the banners are going up and the person to contact, which I assume would probably be you, to get a nice story going about the work that has been done and, you know, what the banners will look like and how many and so forth. Does that sound like a good plan?
Sounds like a great plan.
Good, good. I appreciate all of your work.
There's been a big group, and John Bordeaux really deserves a lot of credit because he's had, he's like the historian for veterans in the town, and he's done a great job.
Good. Well, thank you for the work, and please pass that along to the others. Does anyone have any questions for John? Okay. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else who wishes to speak to the board under public comments?
Just wanted to introduce myself to the public who's watching. My name is Corvica, and I am the new interim Chief of Police for the County of Adams. And to take some time real quick, I just want to thank Chief Tark for years of service to the town of Adams. He retired yesterday, and a special thanks to him for showing me around and taking me to meet stakeholders and people who I really need to get to know to help me along in my job here as Chief of Police. Second, I'm excited to really get to know all of them and work side by side with them. So thank you so much. If anybody has any questions, don't worry, send me an email, call me, and be happy to work with anyone to answer that and make this, help make this along with you, the best town in the region.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments for the chief?
Good to go. Thank you.
We're quiet today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under public comments tonight? I think he's under new business unless you're public comments?
No.
Okay.
Today?
Certainly.
I was just wondering, I like this banner project a lot. My dad was in World War II, and I think it's a great thing to do, but I wasn't made aware that it was given the okay to start on Monday, that Jay just allowed it without going through this process, and that's all, I just want that.
Sure, and I'll have Administrator Green talk to that extent, but I think it's in there to the banners that are put up for, like, the Susan B. Anthony banners, the Thunderfest banners, the Ramble Fest banners, the functions that are for the lead communities of DPW, and not necessarily this board, but I'll let Administrator Green respond to that.
Sure, this is my first time drew applying banners at all in any part of the town. Member Bush approached me as well with George Hadet back probably in spring, I believe, about the project. We thought it was a great community project, and let that group organically materialize itself. I wasn't aware that any special approval was needed. The board met, that committee met multiple occasions with Member Bush present. Member Bush gave quite a few updates as we went along, and then I believe sometime today, the group reached out that they're ready to install. They had ample discussions at a few meetings that I attended about where in town. We let that group decide where. There was a little concern with the Community Development Department that it would compete with Ramble Fest and Thunderfest and all of those other banners. Right now, we don't have any of those events going on, so we thought it was a good time. They were ready to go. It's not going to cost the town any money to install it. It's a goodwill project, so we thought we were ready to go. I worked under the assumption that the board was aware of the project, and if it had wanted specific granting authority, it would put it on an agenda or inform me as such, so I, that needs a lesson, I think, to be learned, because all the other banners, I believe that they went through this process, and once again, I'm all for it. I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but I think that we need better communication because a lot of things come to this board, and they're brought out, and I really don't know anything about them. I knew about the project, I know the hard work Jim Bush has put in for it, and I'm certainly for it. The veterans should get all the attention that they do, and these particular veterans, I believe, were killed in action, so certainly, I have no, you know, qualms about the project whatsoever. It's viable, it's a good project, but I just feel that, you know, I want to get the, I don't know, some better communication. Perhaps you do have the right to do it, but I know in the past when other banners, because I asked for the Adams Agricultural Fair when I was a member, we didn't have banners, and I worked with then-town Administrator Butler and brought in front of the board and things, so I'm.
Member Blanchard?
Yeah, I think if we look back in the minutes, the board was aware before they went out and purchased the banners and the flags and that, it came before this board, and I believe it was approved then.
Yeah, it was approved, but the location wasn't approved on Park Street. We were okay, I'm okay with it, but I know, I know some of the communities that have done this, because I've seen them, and they tend not to be on the main street, they tend to be on highly traveled secondary roads adjacent to the main street, because I've seen them in New York State and other places, and they weren't lining the main street, but if that's the case, then it's fine.
I'll look, because I think the presentation did say it was going to be on Park Street.
I don't remember that, so I apologize if you come up and it shows it said Park Street. I don't remember Park Street being mentioned as a location for that.
Sure. Jim, you wanted to speak? Sure. Jim, you wanted to speak? I think I see your hand.
Yes. I mentioned every selectmen's meeting that we were going to be doing these banners, and that we were looking at putting them on Park Street at every other poll, so we wouldn't interfere with any other banners. I don't know how much more I could bring up.
Well, then, if that's the case, I want to publicly apologize. But I don't remember it being said by you. I'd like to see it written in the minutes that the word Park Street came up. I don't remember it. So if it is, I apologize. I'm all for the project, but I like better communication, because once again, a lot of times, I come to these meetings as a selectman, and things are thrown at me that I know little about. I knew that this project was going on. I didn't know the starting date would be Monday. I didn't know they were going to be put on Park Street. That's all I'm saying.
I will just say that Member Bush did report out on this, I think, at just about every meeting in the last several months.
Yes, he did, right.
And he did indicate that they were trying to get them up on Park Street prior to Memorial Day. He did report out in June, they were looking to get them up before July 4. They've been delayed. I believe his last report talked about that they were delayed with the printing of them. And then it was this week that they talked about that the printing was done. And I was made aware today, speaking with Member Bush, that it would be Monday, and that they were going to be working with DPW, Administrator Green, and so forth. So...
I just don't remember Park Street being specifically mentioned for the location of the banner.
We did look at Memorial Park as an alternate to putting up the banners. Unfortunately, the telephone poles and Memorial Park are too short. So Park Street was our only other option. There is a height requirement for the banners and the sidewalk up to the bottom of the banner. And we did, that didn't meet the criteria.
Can I interject something?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I had a discussion with somebody today, and I just want to make this point. It's not the telephone poles, it's the lamp posts, it's the light poles that we have up.
Correct.
Somebody corrected me today and said, I thought they were going up on the telephone poles. And I said, no, they're going on the lighting poles. Just want to make that, make sure everyone understands that.
Thank you. All right. Anything else under, for the banners?
Do we need a motion to allow it, or it's already been given permission?
It's my understanding that the permission has been granted from...
It can be withdrawn. I want to be very clear.
Yep.
I'll put anything in front of the board, anyone wishes. I send out a lot of emails to try to keep everybody in a loop. Obviously, stuff will fall through the cracks. I was operating under the paradigm that everybody was aware. Is it always good to have, you know, board knowledge and blessing approval? You know, absolutely. I think also, at the same time, having a town administrator system, we get things done with a little bit of efficiency. And it would be incumbent upon me to inform the board of what we're doing as best we can. But in terms of this, if the board wishes to do a formal motion or discussion, I think John said, you know, Callahan was available Monday, but...
No, we can delay it.
No, I don't know.
And if you wanted more clarification, you're entitled to that.
No, that's my, not my intention whatsoever. No, I don't want to stonewall it or stop it. It's a great project, but communication, I feel, it has been lacking.
Anything else on this? If not, I'll go ahead and close public comments unless there's anything else to come before the board under public comments. Okay. We will move on to new business. I believe that we have Superintendent John Barrett here from the Adams Water District to talk to us, to communicate with us about the water, the drought situation, and where we're at.
Evening, my pleasure. Thank you for the opportunity to press this on the table. I think I'll probably start with attempting to explain how we've arrived at the water restrictions. So we are groundwater supplying. As the groundwater supplier, you have to ... This permit would explain all the regulations that we must commit in order to provide water to the public. It also encompasses how and when I have to institute a water restriction. There's three ways that we have a water restriction. The first way is when I do my annual statistical reporting at the end of the year for 2019, I have to take in aspects of calculation of how many residents we have and water that we pump and arrive at a calculation. If we are over 55 gallons per customer per day, I have to institute water restrictions for the entire summer. The second way that you have to institute a water restriction is if the secretary of the EA, she is, so she right now, is advised by the Massachusetts Drought Management Task Force. And they oversee all lower reports, certification thing for like, you know, the past month and predictions of the future. If they make a recommendation to the secretary to enact a water restriction, as my primacy, they supersede what I do. So if they put out a restriction, I as well have to put their restriction out. That is the second restriction in the permit. The third one is I monitor a USGS station located here now. If that's, I monitor it daily. If that station at a given time comes under 14 cubic feet per second for the summer three days, if it gets lower, it happens quicker, then I have to institute water restrictions. I think that about 22 cubic feet per second for us today is low. I think everybody can see this very low. And that's, you know, we didn't have a big summer, a big winter, you know, a snowfall, a lot of things attribute to drought conditions. So that's essentially how we are at the water restrictions now. So that's, it's in correlation with a 20-year permit. And then we created a fire dance fire district water conservation plan. And in that water conservation that I committed to the state and was approved by the state, that explains how I will do and what I will do and what restrictions that I will implement in correlation with our Water Management Act permit. And so this now, this being the case, we could further this restriction if the USGS monitoring station gets low. At this point right now, we're not in violation of that. We're not in violation of the 65 gallons per customer a day. My calculations for 2019 ended up at 59 gallons. You know, as population declines, if water consumption doesn't decline, we'll be in, we will be in violation of that permit. And then when the permit comes up in 2028, you're going to see them start restricting a lot of things. So essentially, we are under state mandate to do this right now. And that is in correlation with the Massachusetts Drought Plan, which they revised last year. I think they tightened up restrictions. I think everybody in all of the United States is tightening up restrictions on water. It's not as vulnerable as it used to be. And I think we're not used to that. So, you know, we have three wells. All the three wells are in the same open firm. They range from 90 feet to 50 feet deep. The water right now is, they're on the average 60 feet deep right now. We're at about 30 feet static water level. It's imperative to maintain and to watch the water that we use, because what happens is when the water gets lower than the wells, and we're using the same amount of water, the wells tend to pull water from areas that they don't normally pull water, because water is not as pumped. That's when you run into trouble, because that water, it could be contaminated. You're pulling farther from the well that doesn't normally come from. So we're not really in a situation right now, but it doesn't mean that. We can be in a situation later. That's the Drought Task Force's job to recommend these to the... DEP enacts it on their recommendation, and DEP followed that through. So what happened was I actually... The Drought Task Force... And then DEP sent me to the water Monday, and we put the restrictions out Tuesday. It's 14 days with restrictions out. So that's about it. And as far as that, any questions?
Yes.
If I may? Yes. I enjoy when you stop by. You give out a lot of really prevalent information and things that I think I learn all the time when you come here. I just had a few questions. Do you believe because of the pandemic, a lot of people being at home, there's even more water use?
I'm looking at our water use every day. It's sitting on a computer on my desk. So I haven't really never seen the water go up. I think our most residents, they're elderly. They're already home. And, you know, it's gone up a little bit, but it's really hard to tell, because we have created a leak and internal leak detection. So we do leak detection every year. We usually try to whip right after we flush. So it's a little bit hard to tell. At the same time, everybody was home, we did leak detection, found a couple leaks, and then we started fixing them. We're actually still doing it. And I'm the only thing we do all the time. So as we find leaks, we'll fix them. And then, you know, I really haven't seen the usage go up. It's random day to day. Right now, we're at about, we're at about 750,000 gallons a day.
Maybe quick answers. Pusik Valley Regional Schools, our apple fur, there's water coming from Cheshire.
Yeah, so we do provide Pusik Valley High School with water.
Yeah, because I, that's why I was thinking with the schools not being open, there are big waters with it. And so...
Yeah. Pusik Valley is, is a, is, you know, they do use a lot of water, however, that's a green school. I don't know how, how much they've been using their gray water system. They have actually a water catchment system that's in the basement. So a lot of their toilets and everything like that is used, but they're not actually using our water. So in all honesty, they don't use a lot of water at all. We have three plants, one at the standard level in the well, drop when another well's done. So they all...
Another question is here, but Specialty Minerals, they have their own apple fur?
Yeah, Specialty Minerals is actually the third, if I remember. I think it's been a while ago. But I believe they're actually the third largest water consumer in the town of Adams. So they do actually have their own, so they're probably actually even regulated by the FDP, sort of, as well.
Yeah, I think probably by the federal government, too, because they're an extract industry.
Yeah, yes.
Well, someday I'd like to sit and talk with you, if you'd have a distance of interest for me, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions?
I do. John, last week, Tom Sacko from the Prudential Committee called in and gave a good overview of the situation. He did identify restrictions that were being enforced in the community. Could you remind everyone of what those are, and has anything changed over the last week?
Nothing has changed. Nothing will change. You know, I cannot lift the water restriction until the, until the secretary does, well, actually, the DEP. The Drought Task Management, they're meeting every two weeks. Next week, they're meeting. So every two weeks, they choose to continue or recommend to the secretary to continue the drought. So their last meeting, they recommended to continue it. I don't think it's going to end anytime soon. The forecasts don't look like they're changing at all. So this is probably, and I think that we all need to get used to this, because the air water conservation plan has changed. I think this is going to be, this is the way it's going to happen in the future, actually. So essentially, you know, any kind of watering or anything like that, your plants, you're not supposed to be running your sprinklers. You're not supposed to be doing anything like that, except for on Monday before nine and a half after four, nine AM. The restrictions are null and void between them seven days, seven times only on that day. And, you know, we just chose one day because that's a day that there's usually not as much consumption. Everybody's kind of worn out from the weekend, so we kind of see lower consumptions on Monday. So that helps the wells to, you know, recuperate through the days when there's more usage. So if we all work together on this, we'll get through it. I don't see, this is not changing. Water is the new goal. And we're, we don't have water like we used to. And we're not going to adjust the subject with clean water. That's just what it is nowadays.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to just piggyback on what John said. He brought up some good points. The problem I see with is trying to make sure people don't do it. Now, we're in for a long period next week of hot weather, and people have gardens and things like that. I mean, it's, it's always a good thing to try to conserve, but try not find a way of enforcing it. It's very tough, because if people have got a garden, and they're proud of it, and then they have some nice flower garden.
I fully understand. You know, the state has recommended, in some states, it's not legal to have water catchment systems. So in efforts to allow everybody to do this, because I know everybody's home, you know, people are growing gardens, and now they're growing gardens. And that's where we're at. So it's kind of a slap in the face by all of our residents that, hey, you can't water your plants anymore. So I would encourage to have a water catchment system. If anybody's got rain duders, take some things, put a barrel under them, and try to water with that, you know. Other than that, you've got to try to adhere to the restrictions. Because so what will end up happening is, you know, our permit is up in 2028. So, you know, when the state puts on these restrictions, and they don't see that we're abiding by them, when they go to reissue that permit, they're going to cut it. They cut it last year. And that's, that's just how it's going. We use a lot of water. Everybody uses a lot of water. Our local furs and groundwater is way more regulated than surface water, you know, and with the withdrawal aspect. And that's just where we're at. So in the long run, if we don't abide by these, our residents will end up paying the price. It's my job to try to avoid that, and that's why I'm here. So, you know, for the betterment of them, it's up to us all to, you know, try to implement these restrictions.
Anything else on the board? Jim, any questions for Superintendent Barrett?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Again, thank you to Tom for calling in last week to give us the information about the water restrictions. And if anything changes, you know, certainly reach out. I know that I'll reach out again and have you back, because I think it's good to keep the dialogue going.
Yes, absolutely. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Administrator Green brings in our next guest. The next item under new business was information about the reopening of schools. So members of this board had asked me to reach out to the schools to ask what was going on with reopening. As I think most of you know, it seems to still be up in the air. As I think most of you know, it's it seems to still be up in the air with regard to our schools. Uh, so I did get a citation uh from Superintendent Erin Bieck. The board at this point as to where they are and what the timeline is. Um, they've asked me to communicate that right now, um, they are working on three scenarios for the fall based on the commissioner's guidance. The three potential scenarios are full in-person classes with safety precautions, a hybrid of in-person and remote learning, which can take many forms, and full remote learn learning. Those are the three scenarios. They've been asked to examine what it would take to fully open and have to submit that data by July thirty first. At this point in time, they have been asked scenario to wait until August to make decisions. As such, that is how they are proceeding. Um, and they will continue to keep us posted on anything that changes along the way. Uh, they've also been directed by the commissioner to not speak of their reopening plans until August. So both Superintendent Rosman and Superintendent Dean have agreed to come and speak with our board in August. It would not be the first week of August, that is McCann's graduation. Um, it will most likely be the second week of August. They will continue to keep us uh in the loop and continue to communicate with us. Uh, but I did want to report back to the board that that's where our school districts are at this time. That was more informational than anything else. So with that, uh, once there's any questions or comments on the schools, we can move on to um a census update. So we have asked Erica Presidente to come forward this evening. Erica spoke about the census on a one. Expert on the census, and I know prior to COVID, you had a a solid plan of how we were going to get people to respond. It's slightly been diverted, uh, given what's happened. Uh, but I know that there was a a request to just hear where we are with numbers, where we're, how we can do better, if we need to do better, and what the plan would be to get people to respond. So if you could answer.
So the town clerk librarian and I have um continued to try to do the best that we can to help our community members. And I have, um, after today's meeting, to send you guys all an email, um, that I received earlier today with a really great informational map on it that can tell you and share you the percentages, the different um, the different communities around us, where they're at, as well as a few flyers that I printed for you here today um for local landlords and for house. Um, the town can actually, I don't know if there's a way to reach out to one of the property holders that will multiple units in town. Uh, but that would be great information that you can help distribute to them. And I'll talk a little bit about why that's why they're supporting it. But first, let me share where the town at this ends up yesterday. We are at sixty-six percent response rate, which is a little bit behind where we were when twenty ten had rolled around. Um, not too bad, but still not good enough. Um, I just, um, as part of my note here, I want to commend the town of Dalton. Actually, right now, it's the highest in Berkshire County. I think it's interesting to note that they're at seventy-four point nine percent. Um, although at this point in time, they too are down compared to twenty twenty ten, something when that, when that had rolled around. Um, right now, it's at seventy-four point nine, and for them in twenty ten, they're eighty point, um, eighty point three percent. So that is pretty high. Uh, again, Adam sixty-six percent as of yesterday. Um, on that map that you guys will have access to, you'll be able to see. And again, it's a system that works the map. Feel free to call me or Mark, you know, who's our original, our original rep. He's the one that shared that information uh to me. Uh, the center of town right now is showing the lowest percentage response rate. So the town has broken into three sections. You have the um, as as Trudy Barry can imagine, the center of town, which uh is um actually downtown Forest Park area, um, over to Mill Manor and over to Admin Street. And then the other two sections are the Maple Grove area and parts of Little Egypt. And then you have um the farther north section of East Red Roof and Zellnight. So if you look at those three areas, um, downtown Adams is currently at sixty-one point two percent response rate. The Maple Grove Little Egypt area right now is at seventy-one point nine percent response rate compared to twenty ten. They were at twenty-six point one percent. So they're pretty close to reaching their, um, where they were in twenty ten. Um, the East Red Roof is on the Zellnight area currently right now is at sixty-six point nine percent response rate compared to twenty ten when they were at seventy-one point nine percent. So as a whole, again, to bring it back to that sixty-six percent, as a whole, we are at um sixty-six percent response. But that map will break it down uh into areas. And how that's helpful is it can tell us, well, let's look at rental properties. We know already that the town has a great deal of rental properties and that there's multiple tenants who own, uh, multiple landlords that own lots of different properties. It could just be a theory that um perhaps that's where some of the lack of response is coming from. Because there's a tenant who has a property that is not being rented. For example, I can say I know the Adams Housing Authority, for example, has multiple units that are not rented for a variety of different reasons. Um, it is a requirement for the application process that they have to come to. But as for an example, um, what we should be doing and what the Adams Housing Authority should be doing as a board member for the authority, I personally, now that I know what's been a problem with them to make sure we're doing this, we should be responding to the federal census that says as of April twenty twenty, there was nobody renting that property or that apartment. So our response rate is showing or could be showing all these vacant properties that are not being rented out right now. So it would be important, I think, for those landlords, they need to information out to those landlords about how they can respond to vacant properties that they might have. And if we're able to do that, we might be able to see an increase in response because that would certainly help us if we do have uh unrented properties in the town. Um, so that talks us a little bit about um how landlords could do um, uh, uh, you know, if if they're doing it, they may not even realize that. Um, but I do have some really great partners that can help them um better understand how to do this and have copies for each of you. And then again, hopefully, that's something that the town can share, um, either on the social media page or through um our different departments to go get that kind of information to them. Um, August eleventh, we'll bring the door knockers. So pretty soon the door knockers are going to be coming out uh the next coming week. Berkshire County has about a thousand employed um adults to do that. And they really tried hard to find people that lived within their own community uh to be door knockers. I know I have at least one board member who, uh, the senior center who's uh going to be doing that. I was hoping that maybe after something that they could tell us who was going to do it. If there was any way that we could help the senior center get that information out so that people felt comfortable about them knocking on the door. Um, but it's just too many people for them to be able to do that. Um, let's see what else I have pretty good. Uh, Josh, other than Adams, um, I think it's interesting and and good to share that our neighboring um community of Cheshire actually currently right now is at a seventy point four percent response rate. And in twenty ten, they were only at closed out fifty-nine point three percent. So they had a great increase in response for this this current year. Um, and as well, the boys, uh, Drury and Florida are all roped into one. And twenty ten, they closed out their response rate at only thirty point six percent, and they're now currently at sixty-one point nine. Um, so I think as a community, we could do better at committing to our response rate. Um, not every section of our town is um or has reached their their peak at twenty ten. Uh, in personally in my own department, I know we continue to ask this question. Um, we have another round of, uh, another round of outreach that we're going to be doing in a different way around Facebook and covering up the things like that. And within that outreach, we're going to include, don't forget about your twenty twenty uh stats of information. So we're doing that. I know I'm also talking with our librarian, and we're going to be looking at how we can find a way to safely allow people access to the internet computer, to social media online. Although pretty soon the door knocker will be there to take that information. But um, if there's still a way for us to be able to do that, we want to be able to be able to provide that. Uh, we'll see. Other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'll see you later.
Sure, any questions?
I've got, I've got a few questions. So back in two thousand and ten, remembering back that I think we had a census of, for example, eighty-eight hundred possibly. It was a uh, a good number. And then when the federal census came in, it was a lot lower. So a lot of us were in shock at the time, um, that it didn't kind of come close to what we had for our yearly town uh census taking. Um, uh, the uh census takers, uh, the the workers that are going to be coming in, do they know who has submitted um their information through the through the mail?
They do, yeah. So they'll be able to be knocking on the doors with it to help those who have not, who have not responded.
So that should help the percentage go up pretty quickly, I would think.
I I think we will definitely see an increase after the door knockers come through. Um, I also know there's a, you know, it's, it's challenging because our local census does show much higher numbers and people often don't understand the difference between a local census and a federal census. And the federal census truly is what helps um other communities at a federal level, at a state level because the amount of people that respond to a a census then determines who we have and how many we have as state representative or as representative at the state federal level. So if people don't respond, we, there's a chance that we do redistricting um for our state representatives and ensure we lose our voice at the state house and at the um federal level. So it's critically important for people to respond to this.
Are there federal grants that are impacted by the number of, uh, of your population?
Many federal grants. So um personally for the senior center, the um, the, there's there's funding that will come through through the federal government that we are able to get um more at the state level. The also the grant funding that we get is based on the amount of seniors over sixty-five that have conceded the federal census. So we need those down separately. We've been done this year, we can do last year, and we'll need a nice share.
Last question is, um, do you, do we know what the percentage was, the final percentage for Adams ten years ago?
Um, I don't, I did not write that down, but I believe it was in the mid seventies. I want to say it was around seventy-four percent, but I I could be wrong. Um, so uh, it wasn't in the sixties, and that one was in the eighties. Um, I'm pretty sure it was in the um, it was in the low seventies. And part of, part of the reason why I I get where I get that number is from where we were in twenty twenty based on those three stuff. So again, the Maple Grove Little Egypt in twenty ten was at seventy-six point one percent. Um, Forest Park, Maple Street, Manor Harbor was at seventy point eight percent. And now Brentford Zellnight was at seventy-one point nine. So it was in that low stuff. A good question?
Yeah, just a quick, um, when is the final count due?
Uh, that's a question I asked, uh, Andrew, I don't have for you. I actually don't know that. I don't know when the final count is due. Um, I believe it's going to be.
Uh, that's okay, don't take it yet there. But I I just was curious because I know it's been moved because of the COVID.
Yeah, everything is about, um, bumped up a couple of months.
Right. And uh, as you brought up in, uh, I'll leave it to, uh, it's very important that we get the most accurate count that we can. We've already lost the congressional seat in federal level. And um, I guess it was twenty ten, um, you know, we lost the seat that John O'Overheld, and it was all combined. Now Richie Neal is um overseeing such a large area that our voice becomes a little bit dampened because we don't have, you know, someone really speaking for us. Not saying that Congressman Neal doesn't do that, but it makes it a lot harder to get your voice heard.
As well as the regional reps for Berkshire County. A lot of times we feel like funding doesn't fall out, you know, uh, so they're left their mouth wide, uh, which isn't quite make it to the Berkshires. But we very much have a lot, a large population of people. Where the the twenty ten federal census showed us that we have the second largest fifty-five foot population in Massachusetts. Um, we also have a lot of second homeowners, um, snowbirds. And if people aren't appropriately filling out the federal census as well as to where there's been a majority of their time, then that could be greatly affected.
I mean, that category.
One more, uh, and um, about communities like Dalton, like Williamson, where uh, are there best practices that they have or is just, it just happens that way that more people?
No, and um, I had just gotten these specifics today, so I'm I'm curious to that question, to that, to the answer to that as well. Um, I plan to reach out to my counterpart in Dalton and find out if they're doing anything differently or what they can do. But from all of our, um, by me please, no meaning, we're all pretty bright on par with our outreach to our community members. Um, to be honest, the only thing that I can kind of credit it to myself, and this is my personal theory, is the large amount of rental properties that we that we do have and a lot of the transitive families that that we get. So that's, that's just my personal theory.
Okay, thanks. I I I also believe that wholeheartedly, we have a transient population. And I think that communities that strive economically have better census because, uh, you know, they're, I don't know how to put it, they're just more in tune to that type of thing that, you know, they know the importance. And once again, I think as we look at our community that, you know, pretty much poverty level, that if I think it makes it a little more difficult, and that's my belief.
So we'll get on that when they knock on the door.
Any other questions from members in the room? Jim, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, Erica. Um, she'll be coming back to join us in a few moments. Um, so the board did ask last week if we could have a discussion about the reopening of facilities. Um, I know that uh Town Council was asked to uh provide some information about the board's role with regard to the reopening of town facilities. He did send an email, but he's on the phone and Ed Ed, if you wanted to just restake uh what you had sent to the board.
As to the question, I'd like to talk concerning the authority of the town administrator and selectmen of the town buildings. So there is a control uh over town property unless a town, uh, city or town provides otherwise. And in the case of Adams, we did provide otherwise through the enactment of the uh Town Administrator Act, which vested the authority of buildings uh and town property with uh the town administrator. And it's, it's a very, it's a very simple answer, but it's, it's working together the provisions of a statute with our own charter, which explicitly places that authority with the town administrator. And I I closed the email by expressing my hope, of course, that the town administrator would work with the selectmen and keep the selectmen uh in the loop with respect to any discussions regarding uh municipal property, town property, and I'm very confident that he would.
Thank you very much. I will uh turn things over to Administrator Green if you wanted to introduce the the folks that are in the room and where we're starting uh the discussion about the reopening of facilities this evening.
Sure, well, I'm just going to make one statement, and sometimes in the conversation you talk who has what authority concerns me because I I don't want any impartation out in the public that this town administrator is doing anything unilaterally or in excess of my own authority. So I I just feel as though it's very important this evening for me to in all aspects of it. And as you can see tonight, there's actually quite a few items here. And I would like to think that over the past year, I take quite a bit of feedback from everybody. Uh, we work in a collaborative fashion and we try to do the right thing uh for the town. COVID nineteen has definitely stressed myself, it's stressed uh town staff, it's stressed our ability to get things done in an efficient manner, uh, but we're managing it best we can. There's no playbook for this, uh, and we're trying to do our best to comply with uh state law. And Mark Layton, who apparently is the star of the hour, because he's the guy that knows best uh how to do that and do it in state fashion. So everything that you're going to hear tonight, you know, we're being very careful, we're being cautious, and frankly, we're being conservative in how we're reopening uh the buildings. and frankly, we're being conservative in how we're reopening the buildings. And really, the overarching context is public health, public safety. So with that, I'd like to thank Holly for coming tonight to talk about what we're doing with the library. But before she goes into what she's doing with the building, we've got some official news, a new member of our library team.
Yes, we have a new adult services librarian named Eleanor Durlak. Ellie has a master's degree in library information science from Simmons University and more than four years of public library experience, who wanted to be able to facilitate...
Spoastee.
...with her name. To that end, she has already been an exceptional addition to our team. She is responsible for running our library pickup service, which is what I'm going to be getting into, a lot you know about. So I just want, you know, she's already done this, and is working hard and very well with us.
Ellie, thank you very much for your patience. I know that this board ratified your appointment, I think, one week before the state shut everything down. We could bring you back. And I know it's part-time at this point. The commitment has been made back in March. So I just wanted to personally say thank you for sticking with us.
Yes, thank you a bunch, but finally been able to get going, and it's not how I imagined I would be able to start, but I'm glad to finally be doing something. So I look forward to working with all of you, and good night.
Thank you.
So we began to offer our library pickup service on June twenty-fourth for that last end of the month. We checked out a hundred and forty-five items by the end of June. We did a soft start, we're trying to get rid of things that were already sitting in our library. Currently, out of the...
Jim, you sound terrible.
I feel terrible.
Yeah. You might want to mute, just saying. Okay, continue, Holly.
We checked out over three hundred and forty items as a guest today, and today's only got sixty-seven, but it was a work for peace. So... thirty-five pickup items, and thirty-four people today pick up items. We, it is working well, we're able to take precautions, and still, at the same time, get, you know, one of our vital services going, getting people material. We are proceeding with caution to keep the public and our staff safe and as safe as possible, but while offering services our townspeople have time to expect. We are working on step two, which is adding public computer access by appointment. We are looking into providing more Wi-Fi hotspot to help those members of our community who do not have access to the internet. I have been talking to Mark Laydell and Jerry Gardner about our plans, making sure that we have enough TPE in the building in order to have people in the building to use the computers. But in the meantime, we are looking at alternate sources of being able to help people. You know, there is a physical divide there, right? People in our community just don't have access to a computer, or maybe just somewhere else, with Wi-Fi, and we, you know, we are one of the facilities that helps those citizens. So we are looking at the future, and we are being cautious about when we're going to do that, and, you know, we do have a plan.
So it sounds like the hours are working for individual, you know, it sounds like that evening hours for anybody who is fortunate to be at work during the day.
We are, right now, where it's going to be, by August, shoot, that Friday, I can use, we are looking at adding that, those additional hours. With the limited staff, we have to kind of rearrange everything, but that was our goal, to add evening hours.
Other questions?
Quickly, I'd like to welcome you to our community, and what do you think about our library? It's a beautiful library, and I don't think you'll find any anywhere that is quite as nice as that. So welcome aboard, and the library is a gem, and I hope that you find yourself enjoying it and getting some work done for us, so welcome. Yeah. Yeah, no doubt.
Questions about the reopening of the library? Jim, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Holly. Appreciate your time this evening, and thank you again, Ellie. Nice to meet you.
I just make one comment.
Certainly.
Jim, you look like Archie Bunker, sitting there like that.
I need the laugh, Joe.
All right.
All right, so that brings on the Council on Aging, so we'll come back, Erica, if you want to talk to us about the reopening of the Council on Aging facility.
Right, so my small group of staff and I, from our normal office hours on the twenty-ninth, actually, of June, we came back a week before the Fourth of July, why I decided to do that, still figuring out. But we came back Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four, so we are in the office on site. We have a beautiful, wonderfully new operating locking mechanism for the visitor center. We have a new padlocks that were installed, and they work just fantastically, a new security alarm system as well, so, with that came along with that. So we feel pretty secure inside the building with the ability to keep the doors locked twenty-four seven. So we kept some great signage, that we had printed through press printing, that was on some nice, like, sticky papers, you will, that goes on the window, and it's asking anybody to, don't approach the door without a mask on. We are only seeing people on pre-arranged appointments, and that lists all of our help numbers there for people to call. We also have a doorbell that we have downstairs of the visitor center, and for those who haven't been experienced appointment, we can still come downstairs, or delivery service or anything like that, that comes there, or what have you. But the restrooms, the visitor center material, all of those things unfortunately are closed to the public right now. With that, we have a logbook involved when you come in for contact tracing, and just to be aware of who's got in the building. No persons are in the building unless they're employees unsupervised, so if somebody does have to come in, there would be, it's a town employee or one of the other renters in the building throughout the whole time. We have hired crystal cleaners to come in and do cleaning every day, so they have gone there to do surface cleaning, and then a heavy duty, more COVID-style cleaning once a week. And you may have noticed outside of the visitor center, there is a beautiful fact that Berkshire County gave us an incredible rental deal, very generous rental deal for the town of Athens for that time, so I'm grateful to them. And we have that for July and August. So we're planning to not resume any programming inside the visitor center, as long as we have that building and protect our community members from the heat or any rain, should it rain, we can still resume programming underneath the tent. What programming looks like under the tent, we've welcomed back Cherryoka Bingo, which gives some of our elders an opportunity to shoot, to scream, scream and holler, not shoot, although sometimes they probably love to, they don't win. So it gets people excited, gets them back together, and with the cooperation of guys with at least up to two instructors, and everybody is at least ten feet apart. So we have that. We also are going to be welcoming in August a few presentations, so some of our folks on the floor that have prepared for an unexpected hospitalization, so we're going to be able to bring programming like that back into the senior center. We have, and always will continue to provide our grab and go lunches through our adult services program. Now, it looks like the mail's on wheels lunches, except rather than if they deliver to their homes, residents have to come to us and pick those up. And we are averaging about a quarter of the day still, with opportunities to increase. People still want to come and grab that lunch and take us to go, they can do that. If they want to dine with their family members or friends, again, like they would in a restaurant, they can do that at the picnic tables that have been brought back to the senior center. If the picnic table is too difficult for them to get in and out of, through a pre-arrangement with us, we can put a table and chair out for them, and kind of find that out before and after, maybe, maybe so. So everything is pretty doable with pre-arrangement and just working through us. As I mentioned, we are back in the office, eight-thirty, seven-four, and I'm on my way to Friday, and we are available to community members for one-on-one appointments. We have like flash screens that have been, that we've gotten, Haley held us first zone, so we're very vocal for those. And third night, we, I believe, the other day, and the community member felt safe, it made me feel safe. We've welcomed back our shine counselor, so she's in house now doing health insurance counseling. She was always doing the mobile and phone and recovery, but now for some people, it's helpful to have another person, and she can do that. And we're continuing to do our numerous outreach phone calls. Fourteen presentations, really isn't much that we can offer, that just hasn't been changed in a little bit in the way that we deliver those services. Our transportation program has always continued, we've actually been one of the few communities in Berkshire County that can provide transportation through the senior center, so I'm proud of my team for that. Our transportation, though, is deflated just a little bit, so we are only operating one van, and because it's part-time hours, we're only operating partial hours on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, so there is no transportation available on Wednesdays, and that'll be starting in the coming weeks. We have a policy that we have in place that we help create with some guidance right from the get-go. So transportation is, the vehicle is sanitized after each ride, it's aired out for a period of time. All of our riders are asked to use the wheelchair lift that goes on, that lifts up rather than the stairs, so that the driver can actually stand in distance away and operate the remote controls, creating distance between the two. We've been asked to take the further seat from the driver, and we're trying at all costs to only have one person on the van at a time, except when it's within the same household. Sometimes people have ECA's or family members that need to go with them, and that of course is okay. BRPA was able to receive grant funding and purchase for all of their vehicles, partition walls as well, the flash screens for the vehicles that are actually removable, so they almost are on like a hinge. So if we were to use the actual stairs, the driver could still be completely partitioned him through the guards as a community member steps up. When they're on the vehicle, swinging it out, so that they can actually act them, because they're in excess that way, it comes right off with a velg rope if you're having an emergency. But for the time being, we really just prefer to use the left, because there is still some people that you just by nature want to push your arms up if they're falling on the way back. So I think it's the same this way. For staffing, it's myself, our outreach worker, and John, who was doing some of the administrative stuff and taking out the transportation. And people seem to be adapting okay, but they're eager for us to resume normal and are, at the same time, understanding that things won't resume for us for some time. We are a senior center, so we take their health and safety to the highest standards that we can, and we welcome any suggestions that people might have to help us continue to increase that they're facing.
Questions?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I just want to thank you for taking all of those precautions. Listening to you really makes me feel that you're really in tune to what is going on and what needs to be done. I was just wondering, though, contractually, you're having crystal cleaners coming every day, and where was that money appropriated? Do you have that money already in hand?
So that funding, Jay, you probably see this, that funding is coming from emergency funding that the municipality is getting. I believe multiple, and not all of the facilities in the town of Athens are using that same service.
Great, and once again, I can see the yearning for the elderly, just as the children isolation gets higher for, you know, people of all ages, particularly the elderly and children, I believe, so keep up the good work. And thank you.
And we'll add that we do have a clearly labeled second entrance and exit into the building, so people can come in from the main doors, and then they exit through our multi-purpose room with a crash bar. But again, when anybody exits, it's never alone, it's always with a staff person, so we see where they are, what they touch. And as well as our tent, our tent outside is head sined up, so the community members know it is only to be utilized Monday through Friday, normal business hours, and there is a very clearly designated entrance for that, the tent as well.
Questions? Jim, do you have any questions for Erica?
No, I don't.
Okay. Erica, I just want to thank you very much for being here and giving us an update.
Thank you, I was provided this forum.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to Town Hall facility. We have Robert and, I think, Mark, I think Robert's taken the lead on this one.
Both are going to pitch in.
Okay.
So the Town Hall is, we're on an appointment basis, and we take a schedule of caution of, uh... in case there's a person in the event that, you know, somebody should come here and that happens after the coverage, so we're taking precautions as we can there, was how to jump hand washing station here, and we have all the required documentation that the state requires. We're also taking out shields similar to what was happening at the senior center. We're also taking on, I guess, some things for in the room to help with that process, even though we have scolding, some of the tools, because of the requirements involved. They came in the first day, and they threw the ceiling right on down, every day since that, five feet up from the wall down, so it was a whole process. Again, this is the way this is going to be done, that we're seeing here. And the funding is, we're being provided for emergency cleaning related funds. We've also taken on ventilation cleaning here, which I don't know when the last time was done, the police station was also done, and the visitor center office. So we're taking an opportunity here while it's been fairly quiet in terms of the public being here to get these things done, and so taking advantage of that time right now. I think that's pretty much given, sort of what was going here for precautions, and we continue to be cautious, but remind you, while I take this one person that comes here and has COVID-19, is potentially ejected, a very high-risk situation that's just sucking at the apple of it.
Mark, I did have, Eric, Robert, sorry. I did have a question about the sign-in sheet that is there. So this evening, I don't know if members of the board of selectmen signed in. It's a posted meeting, there's attendance for our meeting, but technically, should we be signing in when we come here for this meeting? Okay.
Right on the front, you would have a press thing, you see, when you come in the building, deciding, because it should come out that somebody should contract, as whether later date we'll have everybody that signs. We do need it to be signed in.
Okay.
Unless you're a regular staff here, anybody that comes in the building should come in.
So I will ask members of the board, if you did not sign in upon your entry, if you could sign the sheet before you leave, and anytime you enter and exit the building, you should be signing in. Okay? Other questions?
I, Madam Chairman, I just, I brought this up a few times as selectmen about the ventilation systems, because that is so important to have that done, and I was in here today checking my mail, I didn't sign in when I came in, but I will do it in the future. And I think it's awful important, I have some feeling that the COVID early on in nursing homes and in close places, as we've been talking a little bit... we've been talking a little bit about theory, there's, I think there's a distinct possibility to bad ventilation system, that the spread of the COVID could become more contagious. So, that's just a thought, but I'm really happy to see that done, and I also brought it up to the elementary school and how it's there, because it's just so important, and I'm glad to see it. I don't know, Administrator, I mean, do you know the last time that they were done? I bet you had to vent for quite a long time.
Based on the condition of them?
Yeah.
That's a safe bet.
Right, yeah. So, that's... Yeah, so I think that's something now that should be put on as a requirement for a yearly check or two years, whatever the experts say, because it will be much easier and much cheaper once we return and do it, because I know filters need to be changed quite often. So, I give you kudos for that, because I think it's very important.
Well, you know, before and after, if it's taken on the inside of the answering, we wouldn't believe...
Yeah.
That was, that was one of the items, Joe, that identified very early on, that we have some beautiful buildings, some old buildings, we have some complicated HVAC systems, and we really need somebody to wrangle all of that together, monitor that. It's too much for the Town Administrator to do alone, and that's a DPW position, the charter is all facility management underneath there, and Robert's background, why we were looking for somebody kind of with a nice blend of that, you know, Robert's facility experience. I think Robert probably wanted to be on a backhoe of it, more than he did with facilities, but we're tapping into his experience, and we're taking it off the box as one by one. And Mark, if you want to just discuss a little bit in terms of the future, what this building may look like if we do open to the public, what we have for protections for the variety of offices by court, I just want to review a little bit that, what it might look like, what conversations do you have about protection?
So, in some stations, we already have some barriers in place, others have certain barriers or put some furniture, put to the employees, members of public. First floor, second floor. So, there would have to be some expansions put up to direct members of the public in which the areas in which we're going to visit it. We would always like pointers to be made, head signs, that simply doesn't work permanently. Rather than just having members of the public, people coming in just a little bit. So, it's best to have that notification so that the community can directly guide you. Thank you.
Questions about Town Hall?
Madam Chairman, the last meeting, I do request the presentation that we're putting together today, I appreciate it. The reason I asked was that with the budget, eventually, we're going to have to put together a budget. So, I was curious if the Board would have to add additional funding for filters, for plexiglass, for barriers, for social distancing, you know, what would be our role in doing this? And so far, it seems like what you have put in place is our good plans, and it's good that we're starting to engage with the citizens of Adams. When I ask a question in regards to who has the authority of something, and you know me, I'm a policy guy and a rules guy, okay? So, there's nothing personal there that if I ask the Town Council, who the Board appoints for a question, that's all it is, is a question. So, I make that point, but thank you for the presentations.
One of the other things that I will add is, we had a department meeting, John and I spoke earlier this week, and I spoke with department head this week, we'll probably have a presentation next week, just to review what online services we offer by the Town Government, department by department, taking just a quick glance. We offer quite a few, but I think it's helpful for the Board to understand what services are there as you work with constituents and you handle constituent inquiries. Really what we offer for online services, you know, quickly, I can tell you, permitting is online. Right now, one of the busiest things we have is transfer station stickers, but Treasurer Collector writes. She takes it in a variety of different ways, and she knows you back that information. So, even some of the ones that had historically been a face-to-face transaction, we thought through, Haley Meswier, our Town Clerk, she has some forums online, but we'll go through that, we'll have the Department of Minutes, particularly ones that deal with the public the most, and how that's, how that's being done through. We may want to wait actually, Chairman, for a televised meeting if you want that, but we can, we can discuss that. But at some point, we're compiled on that, and we'll be ready to go.
Other questions about reopening of facilities?
So, yes, so we can be clear on it now through what Attorney Saint John said. So, this is now in the hands of our Town Administrator, because our charter has that written in. Okay?
And it does work for us, so...
Right, yeah.
Wink in my eye.
You'll hear about it the best of my ability.
I wink on my nose, but you wouldn't see it with my mask on.
Or you'll, or you'll get it from one of my, my informational updates, as I can.
Okay. And since we had both Mark and Robert here, and they were going to be talking about reopening of town facilities, I just put on here an update on the reopening of businesses and also parks and fields, if there's been anything that you can report on what's happened?
I think Jim was raising his hand.
Oh, Jim, were you raising your hand? I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yes, just a hypothetical question. We have people dining in patios at restaurants, and people dining inside the restaurant. Now, if it starts raining out, while these people are dining outside, how do we accommodate them inside if they're at max?
Mark, I don't know, do you have an answer?
So, that's up to the establishment. But establishments should be aware of what's happening, is they should be watching for weather in anticipation of a storm during their other operations, they should plan to refrain from taking it forward.
I have seen many of our establishments, at least on social media, have been posting prior to opening if the weather's going to be cooperative or not, and if they're just offering indoor dining versus outside dining. But I, you know, the Berkshires, it's Adams, we get lots of pop-up storms, and they are strong. So, but as Mark said, and I don't know if you could hear him...
No, I couldn't.
I didn't think so. So, it is up to the establishment to determine that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And may I answer that, Jim? Nothing worse than soggy french fries.
So, Mark and Robert, if you wanted to just give us any update on the reopening of businesses and parks and fields, I will just remind you that the microphone that you're standing at is for television purposes only, and the microphone that's closest to you is probably that one. So, outdoor voices, and I know that your mask and that's a little bit harder to project, so I apologize in front.
As far as the fields are concerned, again, this is a close work with Mark of the Health Department, because any kind of practice, there's any kind of game, organized sports, basically have to go through Mark. But as far as the fields are concerned, we're pretty much ready to go. There are some, there are still a number of restrictions and closures, for instance, Russell Field is still closed and will remain closed for the remainder of the season, that having construction done there. They should be done in October, but the grass, we would like to have it established, so that will remain closed for the rest of the season. As far as the adult exercise area and playground, we have yet to discuss whether or not that will be opened, but I suspect that will remain closed simply because when you get people on there, they tend to go over the grass, and we don't want to jerryclene that, but that's something that we still need to more discuss. The other field, fields, re-fields, those are in ready-to-use condition, but again, follow up with restrictions here for health. Redrow is, as far as the field is concerned, that is a game field, so that's not for practitioners. All of the... It's on there, are ready to go. I think that's all in terms of the playing fields, and Mark, there's a lot of restrictions and requirements out there for organized schools.
So, as I said the last time I was here, the state would play three different categories, and then four different... Of particular, that is the basketball and skateboards, where under the current state and staff, they would be allowed to open. However, they'd be restricted to individually or individual and socially distant groups, no contact workouts, aerobic conditioning, individual skill work, and drill. So, neither of those facilities are supervised, so we would be, if we were to open those, we would rely upon the honor system of the users to make sure that they are individually in social distance, that there's no contact, that they're just doing aerobic conditioning and individual skill work. So, still going with that, whether or not to allow it, the Board entertained opening it, at least on an additional basis, although there's going to be modified orders in that way.
However, enforcement would be somewhat difficult.
And just like before, if we had to engage them, if they were to get the contact information of the individual, if ordered to leave, then I would follow up with enforcement. But, I mean, it's working nicely now, but a lot of people have...
Have our neighboring facilities reinstated their basketball rims? Because I know North Adams and Clarksburg had taken them down.
I know we're back in North Adams, and we just stayed in the rims, and we, of course, had removed ours as well.
Yeah, it was my understanding that, I think Clarksburg took theirs down around the same time we did, because there were groups in North Adams who found that they couldn't play basketball in North Adams, but they could in neighboring communities. And so, they, they found installed basketball rims. So, I thought that the three of us were still without them, just as the informational piece for the rest of the board.
I'd like to add an informational piece, too. I was in North Adams early in the morning, it was Monday, and going by a few playgrounds, I saw this gentleman there with a spray bottle, you know, doing all the playground equipment. I think that's admirable, but, you know, cleaning like that, it's an attempt, but, you know, it's very hard. I think it'd be very difficult for our community, with the number of people we have, to be asked every day to go to our parks and to, you know, spray unless, you know, you pay some good money for the kind that you just, you know, I forget what they're called, but, you know, they're spraying, and they, you know, you can do it quite quickly, but I noticed this gentleman had just a spray bottle, and he was just, you know, wiping off parts of the, you know, and their, their attempt is good, there's no doubt about it, but it's, you know, you gotta do it right.
Yes, and what we had also discussed was the individual with the parents, with the playground, they have to be supervised.
Right.
Okay? So, I don't know what scenario was, I think it might have been a parent or an uncle, friend, parent, whatever, just trying to do something.
Right, and help out there. Yeah, I couldn't tell if there was a, you know, a city employee, but there was a city playground, and there was someone out there spraying, and quite been heard it before it was the youth.
So, I mean, is this a local employee?
I'm not sure, I wouldn't tell, I didn't see the vehicle or...
So, Robert's DPW, did you do the initial clean of all equipment?
Yeah, yeah. But that would be something if playgrounds are open, I would expect that, almost do it every day.
Yeah, well, you know, the COVID is something that lives in the air for a short period of time, so transfers through physical touch, you know, if I touch this table, you know, overnight, whatever may be there, is pretty much...
Yeah, for services, they'll hold it a little bit longer, but everything's complicated, so...
Over the course of the night.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, it's a set of questions that have, that are a priority, but we don't pull out labor crafts, or particularly hot homes or mid-naps, and do that, you know, that has to be decided. But on all of our parks, we have that sign, you set your own risk, you're all adults, we do have restrictions, but we cannot police everything.
That's right.
That's not our job. So, we do the best we can, but, you know, people have to really remember, you set your own risk.
Right, that's just important, that saves our community from lawsuits, as long as they're up there posted. It's just like when I worked for the state, no lifeguards on duty. And that's all I have, time's going.
Other questions?
I just have one. Any recommendations, I would be looking for, your inputs through the Town Administrator to the Board anyway, so. Little League Field on Valley Street, this is kind of a side note, they're not, they've decided not to have a leak this year for little leers, the Adams. And I've been told that the Pitcher's mound and the baseline to our home plate really could use some fill, could use some work, and also the, every year, I think we, I think the Town provides the infield material. I'm, from what I've been told, is that, I don't think they received any last year, this may be a good time, maybe late summer, early fall, to build up the Pitcher's mound, it's almost flat, to build up our home plate, and do some, you know, possibly the Town could purchase the material, and then the Leaks could, which we've always, the Board's always pushed that, that, you know, Town can purchase material, but the Leaks could do the volunteering and to fix their fields. So, it's kind of a win-win for both of us, but just something to keep in mind, you know, to consider, and maybe you bring it up again when budgets start, that if there's some way we could get that field ready to go for next spring, that would be helpful for that week.
Yeah, we can look at, you know, claim the same mixture for that, what it takes, and we can look at that. We've been hesitant, because we didn't want any harsh activities on the field, so we didn't prepare, like so many infield, some of the grass that they've grown there, we have ripped it all up, that's all we had to do, but we did not fill in all of the spots that could use some addition.
Okay, for consideration in the future. Thank you, thank you.
Other questions? Jim, did you have anything for Mark or Robert?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you being here.
You guys.
All right, so that brings us, the last item under new business, a discussion about student recognition. I had communicated with the Board that we were hoping to do a recognition this evening... evening, uh, for an award, but then it was, uh, brought to my attention that there were several awards, um, also presented at the same event, um, to a number of students, um, two additional students at Music Valley and, uh, Adams residence at McCann, um, so I had asked to just postpone, um, and then have a conversation here. Uh, I didn't want to miss anyone, um, and felt that we would have been missing some students if we had moved forward with, um, the, the presentation that was asked of us. Uh, so I just wanted to, I know I sent an email indicating that that's what that, the post comment was about, um, I just wanted to see if anyone had any input or anything to discuss on that.
Um, yes, Madam Chairman, since I brought that, uh, to the forefront, um, I'll give you my reasoning for it. Um, the person, I'm not mentioning names, I don't want to do that, but, um, within my thinking was that this award was given to just one, uh, female and one male, and if you go down, and I wrote this down, now, there's most valuable giving, given out in hockey, football, soccer, both, girls and boys, volleyball, swimming, both girls and boys, basketball, both girls and boys, alpine skiing, both girls and boys, Nordic cross-country skiing, both girls and boys, cross-country running, both girls and boys, wrestling, golf, baseball, softball, lacrosse, girls and boys, tennis, girls and boys, track and field, girls and boys, and I don't know if they're giving out MVPs for, uh, bowling, and that would, if so, it would be girls and boys, I'm not sure if they do. And some of these categories, they were called MVPs, so counting that up, there's approximately a, a good number, I'd say, let's see, I don't know, I, I just put roughly, I didn't count, I can do it, but I don't want to take the time, like thirty, and there's other ones that are most valuable that are co, so that can bring it up, but there's only one female and male athlete in all of Berkshire County. So my reasoning was that the percentage of all the people that were mentioned that received MVP or most co-MVP are admirable, very admirable, but percentage-wise, there was only one female and one male that got the, uh, award for, uh, athlete. I don't, it never was my intention to, uh, uh, demean anyone or to, uh, make, uh, light that, you know, that, you know, they shouldn't be, uh, given any type of, uh, recognition. They have received the recognition, and I do realize that both the female and male were also given recognition, but I just felt, and I still feel strongly about because of the number of MVPs given out, they have been recognized, so has the male and female, uh, of the year, but I, I just thought that it would be something good that we brought forward individually and gave them, uh, you know, a citation, because it's not just the athlete that they pick, they look a lot at, not just the athlete for their ability and, uh, and athletes and sports, like, a lot, and, um, at the marks in school, and they look at a lot of other things, their community activities, so that's my reasoning. Um, I'm gonna stop there, and you're, Madam Chairman, you are the person that put the hold on it, so I'm gonna put this in your court and you do what you feel that you want to do, and, because I, I don't want to get carried away with this, because it's a good way to make bad feelings amongst people, and I'm not somebody to do that, so you're the one that put it on the agenda and you didn't, you know, I, I, and I'm just, you know, as a lawyer, that's my case for.
I, I put it on the, I know it's, um, it's not necessarily my call.
Yeah.
The board does, and I think that it's my, you've mentioned sometimes that it's my call, it was my call to postpone. Um, I did so because in talking with some administrators at this school, when I was asking for face masks to be celebratory for this, as you know, I've, um, been supportive of this going forward, it was brought to my attention that there were other students recognized at the same event that the Berkshire Eagle had raised together.
Right.
Um, so I did my own research, um, to find out who the students were, um, and then found that there were other Adams residents who were, um, also part of the recognition and grew uncomfortable that we might not be including everybody that we could have, um, and so had asked to put the hold on it. But I put this on the agenda because I wanted to hear from other board members, um, wanted to have you have a chance to talk about it, because you've been brought forward at a public meeting, um, so I, I just wanted to, to have the form to do that.
Right, and I would just like to state also, of the three that were made mention of, there's only one individual who, uh, is a resident of the town of Adams that goes to, the other resident is not a student at our, a town school, at our district school.
It's not at Music Valley Regional School that nor, that are a member of.
Yeah, but not Town of Adams, or not, it's not in the Town of Adams.
It, it is a resident of Adams who goes to a, a district.
Right, yeah.
That is covered by the Town of Adams.
Okay, so, and I mean, I've made my point, and I'm, I'm just gonna drop the ball on your court, if you don't think it's worth while, then I don't, because I don't want to get, you know, I don't want to slight people, it's never was my intention, uh, that there's only one female and one male to get a prestigious award like that, and I think they deserve recognition, because we have given out recognition to other people for certain reasons, and I think that's, I'm not gonna say anymore, I rest my case.
Anybody else have anything you wanted to add?
I'm just a little confused.
Okay.
You're upset that more than just one person is gonna be recognized, we're talking four people altogether, right? So I don't understand what's wrong.
Tell me, tell me what you don't understand. If the sky was blue, you look over me every time I make a comment and you kind of said, so what don't you understand? I'll try to explain my.
Can this happen?
Yeah, I believe you do. Every time I make a statement, you always turn to me and kind of, you know, like, give the opposite.
Joe, you're, you're upset that instead of recognizing one person, we're talking of recognizing three people.
Yeah, but I, I, but I think they're in different categories, I, I think recognizing somebody who is most valuable deserves recognition, and I also admit that they did also receive it, but I think, I played sports all of my life, college level, all through high school, all through, uh, uh, grammar school, and I was a good athlete, and I'm not boasting, but I was a good athlete, and I know what it takes to be one out of so many, matter of fact, I was, uh, most valuable a couple of times, and, you know, I got my kudos, but I was never named, uh, the athlete of the, uh, county when I played, uh, sports, and I just think the ranking goes higher than that and all the other people, because as I mentioned, Rick, there was approximately, I'd say thirty-something most people given out. Not slighting the others who did get most valuable, they didn't end up being the athlete of the year in Berkshire County, so that's my point, and I'm sorry the way I did it, but it seems, the last number of meetings, every time I say something, you turn to me and, you know, it's, well, it might go this way or it might go that way, and I like a little respect, I respect you, I've never gone beyond each time you looked at me, or I've never, you know, I, I let you make my decision, but you've always been, you know, just lately, the last two, three months it's been, every time I said something, you've turned to me and, you know, give me an opposite spin on it, and it's just something that bothered me and I had to say it. So I apologize if it hurt your feelings, but it's been hurting mine inside.
I really don't think it hurt my feelings.
Okay.
I was just questioning.
Yes.
The whole reaction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, was my, uh, do you need any more clarification?
No, no, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll go with that, Joe.
Okay.
You're the only one who's probably having an opinion.
No, no, Rick, I, I'm glad, I, I respect your opinions, but I think if you would look back and you think yourself that the last, I don't know how many meetings, it's almost been a competition between you and I, every time I say something, I bet you eighty percent of the times you've turned and said something opposite. For example, oh, the Indian police officer, well, it may be, uh, to an advantage, you know.
Senator Nobat, can I ask you not to mock people? You're using a different voice.
Okay.
To mock.
I, I, I apologize, and I'll stop right there, but I stated my point, and I believe it wholeheartedly, that the last number of meetings, that each time I said something, I've been turned to and said something that, you know, was just out of the ordinary, so I apologize to Rick, but I think deep down inside, I'm right in what I just said about that.
I wanna go with that.
Are you willing to say something?
Yeah, just, again, my opinion of this, and Joe's brought forward, um, some, uh, recognition, uh, of individuals of teams, which, uh, I remember back in some of my favorite meetings that we had, and with the bask, girls' basketball team, and all well-deserving of, uh, recognition. Um, however, um, for this board to, um, keep track of every individual, to be fair, um, to keep track of every individual that has accomplishments that are well-deserving, and many do, um, for example, if, um, our bunny, our championship for the state, or, um, you know, our valedictorian and valedictor, and I, when I read who they were, I was very proud, um, that they attained that level, and they, you know, they, this is education side of things, and I think, you know, that those are other awards that we could possibly consider, um, and again, there's other, there's teams that won Western Mass, that won the state, which we celebrate the girls, there's been other teams in the past, but the boards haven't taken that up in the past, but I just think it, it, to be fair, and in this board, to be able to track and, and to ensure that we, we recognize everyone, and I think it's just gonna be almost a constant job, full-time job of identifying those that, uh, are deserving, and, and many are, so, and, and my, just from my experience, Joe, in the past, and again, I have enjoyed what we've done on some power, but I'm just, at this point, we, we almost missed a few people, um, which would have brought some hard feelings, even if we were, uh, it was, you know, not what we intended, I think we would have had some negative feelings towards us, um, that this board, and when I was on the school board, that we just didn't get into these type of things, uh, awarding, uh, individual, um, uh, athletes, uh, um, uh, employees, also, I think, we, you know, we're a board that makes decisions for the community, and, uh, if there was some way that outside of this meeting, we could, you know, to get together and, you know, not as a board, but as volunteers, I'd be all for it, but as a board, I don't think, you know, we can continue to do what we've been doing, it's been good, but, uh, I think we gotta be fair, uh, so.
Okay, um, with that being said, um, I want to remove that from an option of, uh, um, giving our citation to someone that I think is truly deserving of it, so I'm gonna lay it on the table, and, uh, I'm gonna ask that it, uh, be removed from, um, any more conversation.
Well-deserving, thank you for bringing that person forward, Joe, well-deserving, just have a different opinion.
Yeah, right. I just would like to say, though, to you, Mr. Duval, that you've never brought anything up that, you know, to have anyone come in, so you're talking about hypothetical, about salutatory and valedictorian, you're saying that, that we should do it, but I don't remember you ever asking to give somebody to come in for a citation, we just pass them out to the Haddad family, right? Okay.
But, just going by your first statement that I've never done it, there's a reason for that.
Right, right, okay, yeah.
Because the previous, previous boards and, and the other years that have been involved, that we, we just didn't do it, because this could happen, and here we are tonight, as, as the readers of this community, you know, arguing over, you know, a person that is well-deserving, you know, and it's unfortunate, um, but, you know, that's why I haven't gone anybody for, that's the reason.
Last, last statement, last statement I'm gonna make, and I don't, I don't want to belabor it, is you said, oh, I really enjoyed when we had the team in, I enjoyed this side of, so it had a way.
Right, but, when you think about it, I, when we, we're gonna come to the seat, we're gonna miss a few people, we have started thinking about.
Well, I gave you the reasoning, uh, number-wise, why it's a lot different than missing people. So, I, I remove that, um, and no wonder will I pursue it, and I don't want our chair person to pursue it, and we'll just have to do.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the healthy discussion on that. Um, we'll move on to, um, department reports, and we will start the town administrator.
Thank you, it's now, uh, we're in the middle of the construction season, we're ramping up some projects, so just as a review for everybody to understand what they're seeing out there for construction, our town common rehabilitation project is underway, our Russell Field rehabilitation project is underway, our Grant Street neighborhood stormwater remediation project is just starting now, and our Crotto Street, complete street program is also underway in that neighborhood. Uh, the Ashley-Willicook rail trail construction is ongoing, that's a state mass DOT project, uh, that's a multi-stage project, not just surfacing, but also some rehabilitation, fencing, et cetera, but they're on the northern end, uh, working away on that. And, uh, although this, too, is a metropolitan planning organization project, our commercial street rehab, uh, project, it is my understanding that digital works have been open, and, uh, they do have a, a better place, but I just don't think, I'm not sure if, uh, they're ready to announce that, but that project is moving forward, it is possible, hypothetically speaking, we may see some, some construction begin before the end of the construction here, this year on that project, so we're moving ahead. Uh, one other project, but not related to roadway, is, if you recall, prior to the COVID times, if you will, we had a workshop with our engineering team, tie-in bond regarding the capital improvement, uh, and for our wastewater treatment plant, uh, myself, Mr. Tober, Mr. Rumble, uh, along with the tie-in bond team, we have a preliminary report ready, I would like to have a workshop, I spoke with Chairman Hoyt last week in July, we're gonna ask tie-in bond to come in, give you focus and update on what they found over at the plant, uh, and also begin to start to explore, uh, you know, way how we're gonna fund that as well, so we'll, we'll, uh, move ahead with that, we'll have that conversation. Uh, also, uh, there were three items passed in that fifty thousand dollar, uh, uh, project, the CIT, the sewer enterprise fund study, which is, which will move forward, but they haven't finished up the CIT first, and they are moving ahead in the third one, which is a grant application to really take that CIT one step further and turn that into an asset management plan, so down the road, the operators know which pump, et cetera, to replace what, what cycle, so that is moving ahead, COVID just delays everything, but you should hear an update on that. Uh, I've spent quite a bit of time over the last few days with Chief Bacon, doing some integration into the community, so I'm spending some time with him, I'd like to thank Chief Tarsa, too, not only for his service, uh, but also for his willing to, on his last few vacation days, uh, to work with Chief Bacon, but we're getting him up to speed as, as much as possible, and, uh, we're still implementing our new payroll system, which is an internal system, uh, for us to have better accountability as well, and also, as I've said before, includes the time and attendance system, so department heads will be able to electronically put in for time off, or to come to me, you know, it'll trickle down, down the road, uh, that's going on since, uh, July, Mary and Ashley, I'd like to thank them for their, their time with that, they're really spending some time with it, but it'll make it a little bit more of, of efficient in house. So, we're, we're very busy. So we're very busy, a lot of things going on, but for folks out on driving around, walking around, please be careful of the construction zones, we have a lot of work, which is a good thing out there. Well, yeah, thank you.
No, thank you. Any questions for the town administrator? Number one.
Just wanted to play a call. In front of Memorial, by the crosswalk, grass has gotten real high, and I was going to ask, and then the last time I rode by, I noticed the little D.C. flag there.
That's right. Because I asked, and that was the answer, because I was wondering why that one was attached, that's why they didn't want to destroy the D.C. marking. That's a...
That was here by the crosswalk.
That's part of the old Grant Street, the small one.
Other questions?
Yeah, just a comment. Jay, I think that we didn't drag our feet, and because of that, we've got these projects up and running. I know some other communities stalled, because I, you know, when you drive through, you don't see much going on, because we didn't let it be an impediment that, you know, things have moved along pretty good, and we do have a lot of things going on and stuff.
We do, there's a lot of positive energy. It's very hard to try to capture that and convey that, but I think the public should know that we're receiving a lot of safe projects. We're not a broke community, it's a matter of just being smart and being able to go after these grants. The hardest part, frankly, of all this work is simply managing, having the amount of town staff able to just watch it, be a steward for it, et cetera, you know, keep the project on track. So we all do a little bit of that. Donna does a little bit, Becky, Robert, and Tim Coda, and DPW, and myself, so it's a team effort, and we're proud to keep the ball rolling. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all I have.
So I have one question. We're going to be approving the budget, the 112 budget for the month of August, with the next meeting, isn't it? I read recently that the town of Ramstown is now starting to move towards a town meeting, they have more information now than they did in the past. Is there something out there different, or they're just going to go for it?
They're just going to go for it. Some, you know, some, he's taking as much information as he possibly can in terms of what he thinks the state is going to do, and in certain, you know, we have the capability, if we want, just hypothetically, for conversation sake, we could say the state is going to reduce state aid by ten percent. So that eliminates us two hundred and fifty thousand. We could today just take two hundred and fifty thousand by town meeting warrant, out of stabilization, move it over into the budget, and move ahead with a fiscal twenty budget. The gamble on that is, will the state aid be reduced by that by that moment? However, with that, we, and I think I may have said this last week, we do need to keep our eye on the prize in terms of forty R and zoning. So at some point, we may wish to move forward with a town meeting in order to address those two topics that we have to get through. Because keep in mind, if forty R goes through, the state can return for the town, allowing forty R to be on the books, will give us that infrastructure payment. We owe two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars worth of work on the commercial street project for what's called non-covered work, and that is some of the sewer work. So because we don't have that enterprise system for sewer, we don't qualify for a loan program or a grant program to cover that work, it has to be done by town fund. So we have that programmed in our capital program. If we pass forty R, the state will give us a payment for doing that, and that money generally has to be spent for infrastructure-related projects. So let's say we get three hundred thousand dollars for bringing forty R onto the books, we can use that money to pay for that sewer program. So we might want to take a look, you know, at some point strategically, we've reached the end of the road of waiting and have to move forward. It won't be easy, but some communities are making those decisions. Other communities, Joe, to your point, have been able to move ahead, simply because they don't rely on state aid as much as ours, you know, does. So that's why you see some of those smaller communities moving ahead, like Adams, you know, for...
Thank you.
Jim, do you have any questions for Jay?
Yes, I do. Jay, could you elaborate on what's going on at the park by McDonald's? I know it's been on social, it's been on iBerkshire, it's been on Berkshire Eagle, it's been in select meetings, but, you know, social media seems to be kicking in. What happened to our gazebo? Just, just a little elaboration, please.
The gazebo is a little under forty years old. I believe the town common project was, that project was probably completed mid-eighties, I would say. Thank you, Joe. So the gazebo is removed, there is some tree trimming work that was already done, there's a lot of landscaping work, it's a lot of grounds management work that's being done over there. Anyone that walked over there, I was over there at Christmas time, watching DPW decorate our trees, and there's divots in the, you know, the ground tripping patches. So this project will take care of all that. There's going to be some walkways that will be constructed, sitting areas, and the gazebo will be replaced with a proper, accessible gazebo that meets public structure standards. So a structure is going to be returned, and of course, the capstone event of the entire town common rehab project is the installation of the Susan B. Anthony statues, which we anticipate till sometime in August, we believe. And we're trying to coordinate to get the site work done so we can still accept the statue, and all of that still needs to be coordinated and still needs to be planned out, but that's still the goal. So it's really an entire rehab project in the town commons. Majority of the funds are part-grant, part-land acquisitions. I'm trying to think what it is, but it's part-land acquisitions. We've actually been successful in getting a few of those grants. I want to say, I think it was eighty percent of that cost is paid for by that grant, and the balance was authorized last year's town meeting with some capital funds for that. That's a quick dissertation on that project. But really, when you drive into town, that's, you're coming in from one sixteen, or coming in from eight, going out on eight at Center Street, it's right there, it's going to be a nice, nice welcome spot. Think about how that whole end is going to look eventually, just, it's helping get the Groce Street Bridge, will be redone, Commercial Street's going to be done, Town Common's going to be done, McDonald's is due to still get their facelifts. It's going to look really nice.
No, thank you, Jay.
Jim, anything else?
Well, I would just like to say, felt a comment that our group, the Adams-Suffragette Centennial Celebration Committee donated twenty thousand, although it's worth the town, and put money for us because you needed a little bit more money for the engineering. So we are happy to do so.
Good, thank you. All right, that brings us to town council's report. Everybody should have a copy of town council's report at their seat. Thanks for holding on.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Since my last report last week, July eighth, I responded to a request from Selectmen Duval concerning the authority of the town administrator and selectmen over town buildings. I reviewed and signed several town contracts, and I assisted town clerk in responding to a request for public records. In doing so, I spoke with an attorney from the Secretary of State's office to assure the town's compliance with the public records. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for town council? Jim, anything?
No.
Okay, just checking. Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
All right, that brings us to subcommittee and liaison reports. Camera's pointed in this direction, so I will start with John, if you have anything.
Just to add that tomorrow evening, at five o'clock, the BRPC Executive Committee will be holding a meeting, and at six o'clock, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, the full commission, will also be holding a meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Rick, anything?
Yeah, also tomorrow, we're going to be having a BACZIA telephone, the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership Executive Committee will be meeting to go over future plans for our organization. And I'd like to ask John, I remember the last meeting, did you find out about that bridge?
You know, I was thinking about that today, Joe. We're meeting tomorrow night, I'm going to ask that question.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
I appreciate your patience on it.
Yeah, no, that's quite okay.
Joe, are you referring to the Groce Street? Yeah. So today, we had a conversation that I can't guarantee this is the answer, but what we may think Mr. Tober was referring to is if there are certain overages in quantities that are already programmed into the project, such as traffic control, the town is responsible for the overages. So Robert, he couldn't remember today the exact context, so he thinks it's quite possible that that was the context, that the project will take care of traffic control, but if there's an overage in quantity of product, if there's an overage in, you know, another day that's needed for traffic control, it may be on the town. Because that language is in the commercial street project, which is standard construction language. So that may be the same. So if you want to pinpoint that down, John, if you ask, because Donna doesn't even know about the Groce Street Bridge project either. We don't know where the documents are.
Yeah, it's a separate project from Braggade.
So that might be a standard after our practice, but we'll still get to the bottom of it.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
No, that's it.
So, oh, camera's this way. So John, any announcements in good order?
The ceremony for the chief yesterday morning was fantastic, in my opinion. I think, kudos to the Board of Selectmen and to Jay Green and the Police Department, a well-run ceremony, and hopefully the future can have more of those official-type things. So, thank you.
Portable P A's, the amount of time. That's on the list. Well, thank you for that. Rick?
I think we skipped somebody.
Oh, Jim, I'm sorry. For subcommittee and liaison reports, do you have anything? I'm so sorry.
Well, I was unable to make the food bank yesterday, but talking to Erica, they served three hundred and eleven families yesterday, which is fantastic. I mean, these, the volunteers and the people involved with that are just super, you know, you can't thank them enough. I want to thank everybody for giving us the go-ahead with the banners for Monday morning. That was, that made my day complete. I'd like to thank Chief Tarsa for his years of service, and welcome Chief Bacon on, and wish him a lot of luck in the future. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Amber Blanchard, for the reminder. Being with the TV here, and knowing that you all can see, I have neglected looking at the screen, which I have in several weeks, so thank you for the extra set of eyes. Joe, anything on your announcements in good order?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Kim Woodick. I like the little reports that she sends to us, they're only done in pencil, but they tell me a lot that where she is and what she's doing, so I want to thank Kim for keeping us abreast of her activities. It helps us know what she's doing and lets us know what she did at particular places that, and I just thank her for that. I'm still interested in finding out when we're going to have the auditors come to our meeting. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
I actually have that as my announcement.
Okay. And also, I think Jay's tenure is well over a year now, I think it's time that we have a review.
I'm putting together the evaluation. I've actually requested some evaluations from other communities, and we'll have that done soon.
Okay. I guess that's all, other than to, as everyone else has just looked to. I wish Rick well in his retirement, life is short, and I just hope that he enjoys his time, and I'm certainly wishing the best for our new interim police chief, Troy Bacon. I think he was an excellent choice.
All right. So just along the lines of the retirement, since it was just brought up by all of us about Chief Tarsa's retirement, it was mentioned yesterday that we are looking to find a time in which we can honor, we had five retirements in the police department over the last couple of months, so the retirements were Chief Tarsa, Lieutenant Briggs, Sergeant Miford, Officer Dean, and Officer Sharon. Collectively, they bring, they brought a hundred and sixty-one years of service to our community. It is definitely something to recognize and honor, given the restriction limitations, that's a little bit difficult to find the proper way to do that. We are working with the department on a way to do that, most likely outside somewhere, and when many of the members of the department could be there. They are actually looking to put together that retirement, and we've asked for the board to participate. So more information, we are able to do that. But in terms of the next three meetings, just wanted to let you know what's coming up. So early on, I think it was the end of June, I told you we would do a meeting on July twenty-second, and it would be a meeting, so that's next Wednesday, so six p.m. meeting. On the agenda is the August twenty twenty budget, the 112 budget for us to approve. Dave Irwin, who is our auditor, will be present next Wednesday to give a presentation on the audit. Tax collector, Kelly Rice, will also be present to give an update, as also was requested. We do have a couple of appointments that are coming before us next week. However, we still have positions available with the Parks Commissioner, we, or Parks Commission, sorry, VBA, and Sense Viewer. So those items are still out there, but we do have some appointments. I believe that we have two special police officer appointments that have been forwarded to us, so that will be on the agenda for next Wednesday. If there's something else that you would like on the agenda for next Wednesday, please let me know by closed business tomorrow, so that we can post the agenda accordingly. On Wednesday, July twenty ninth, it'll be a six p.m. workshop, and that, as the administrator re-mentioned, it'll be a presentation by Ty and Bond about the wastewater treatment plant, so please mark your calendar for that. And then on August fifth, that'll be our next televised meeting, so we'll be back to seven p.m. And currently, right now, on the agenda is online services. If you have something that you would like to come forward on the August fifth agenda, please let me know that as we go on. So that's kind of where we stand with the next several meetings. So I wanted to give you that as much notice as possible. I tried to do that at the end of June with all of the July meetings that we did as the July twenty ninth workshop, so I hope that your calendars will allow. That's all I have for announcements in good order. Did I hit everybody for announcements in good order? Jim, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come before the board...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Joe. Do have a second. I have a second by Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Thank you very much, but save us from the roll call. There are some things here to be signed.
I'll get them in the morning.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for...